Mayor Eldridge, you're Councilman Gilbert here by present.
Thank you this time. I would like to ask those wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Scott McKenna, First Baptist Church. All about a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Love's praise. Father in heaven, thank you for this day. Thank you for the privilege to gather tonight to do business here in the city. Thank you for this great city. Thank you, Lord, for the leadership that you have raised up for this time. And Lord, I just pray your hedge protection around this city council, around the leadership of our town, of our county, of our state. And we thank you for just your presence in this place. We ask God that you give wisdom for all decisions that need to be made and direction, God, for each and every action that needs to be taken. Lord, I just ask that you would lead this city to be the city that really exalts you and shines for you and lives a life that models and looks the rest of the world how we should live. Do pray God your hedge protection, as I said a minute ago. But there's weird times we're living in. And Lord, we thank you for just a sure fact that we know we never are alone, that we're never left, but he was always with us. So we pray God for safety and security for our leaders. You tell us to pray for those who are in positions of authority and rulers. And Lord, we do pray for our president. We pray God that you would continue to have your hand upon the leadership of this country. And for their hedge protection, Lord, we thank you, Lord, that the outcome of events recently were different than they could have been, even though, Lord, we grieve over the loss of lives that we experience every day and especially recently. Lord, we pray that you will again bless us, watch over us. Thank you for your hedge protection. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, Lord. I am the United States of America into the Republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, consider approval of agenda presented. Are there any change?
No, no.
All right, motions.
So move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bachi. Any discussion from the public?
All votes correct. Five yes, two motion carries.
Thank you. Item four, appointments. We've got some pretty exciting scores to hand out tonight. But first, we'll do four acres or equipment to the Cookville Tree Board. I have got a nomination for Sid Bundy to serve on the tree board from eight one twenty twenty four to eight one twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion on that?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion?
All votes correct. Five yes, two motion carries.
Thank you for being receiving life-saving medals. Chief advocate.
Mayor Council, thank you for this opportunity. And it's my honor and my pleasure to present some awards tonight. And so I'd like to start with some life-saving medals. And I'm going to combine the distinguished citizens award with that because it's all one package. So Tammy, come join me. And then also, if I can get you a hundred for you, baby, come on up here. And number back. So kind of give you just a little bit of background on this. And some of you may have heard. So this particular process, if you want to call it that, McCurry, our Kane Creek Prep Center, back in the large, a gentleman while playing basketball, and I think he may be here tonight. We'll offer the opportunity to speak together. Suffered a cardiac event. And just so happened that one of our officers, while off duty, Sergeant Tammy Goolsby, at that point, now miserable, working for us as a civilian, was on scene as long as her pickleball, pickleball, right? And of course, obviously, once they were alerted, sprang into action, began CPR. And all the counts, this gentleman is here tonight because of their actions. So it's my pleasure. Of course, if you may recall, it's not been too many weeks ago, we gave Tammy her first life-saving award. So this is her second. So her second subsequent award comes in this manner. So my policy, you know, each year, we normally try to identify a civilian that's deserving of a citizen award. And we thought this was the most appropriate opportunity to recognize both of these fine folks, again, operating just out of the good Samaritan and kindness of their heart, along with Sergeant Goolsby at the time, demonstrating great courage in saving this gentleman's life. Thank you. We guess I have some additional life-saving awards for Officer Cody Scott, Officer Brandon Lindsay. You guys will join me. Did Lane make it tonight?
He's at the academy, sir.
Okay. And we'll have another, I'll mention him tonight, and we'll make sure he gets his award. It's Officer Lane Peebles. Lane is one of our new officers. He's in the academy, probably on his way home this evening after a hard week of push-ups and running and all the things they do there. But as y'all may recall, back in June, latter part of June, had an incident on Willow Avenue. A gentleman in crisis, having some mental issues. These officers arrived on the scene, and their quick thinking and calm response to this incident were able to distract and de-escalate the gentleman. And shall I put it, of course, most of you may have seen the social media. So we retrieved him off the bridge and ultimately saving him his life and got him the hope, the help that he deserved. So again, without, again, without their calm, decisive actions, their bravery, another, another one of our citizens may not be here tonight. So just want to recognize them with their first life-saving award. All right. Alyssa, if you don't prepare to join me. So obviously, there's a variety of awards and recognition that's by policy that we present each year. Every, every year this month, we, prior to the end of July, we accept nominations for Officer of the Year. And this year, I'm proud to announce that Detective Alyssa Coppinger will be the recipient of the 2023 Officer of the Year for the Cookville Police Department. And I think her captain, who nominated her for this, has probably said it best. And I'll just kind of read some of his comments. Detective Coppinger has been a valuable team member and top performer for the Criminal Investigations Division. Detective Coppinger is an exemplary, has an exemplary attitude and work ethic for hard work and attention to detail, and her assigned cases have resulted in multiple felony arrests. Detective Coppinger is a dependable leader in the department when it comes to financial and property-related crimes. Her value to the department goes beyond her role in CID. She serves as a member of the SWAT team, firearms instructor, armor, I-CAT instructor, and member of the recruitment team. So obviously, a multi-faceted young lady. I will tell you a story. When we hired her, I told her mom I'd take care of her. No, mom was a little anxious about leaving her with us. But I think she's taking care of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sure the council would like to make a few comments. Anybody wants to start? Or I will. I could not be more proud of, of our police officers, of the citizens in this room, the fact that we had multiple people receiving awards, sometimes for the second time. That just goes to show you what, what type of citizens and police officers we have here in Cookville. Could not be more proud of y'all. Thank you for what you do for this community, for our citizens. We are, we're absolutely blessed and lucky to have y'all be, be a part of Cookville. So thank you so much for being here and for, for what y'all have done.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are top-notch and value each and every one of you. You don't get the recognition you deserve. But you guys are an amazing, an amazing group. And I think we've got the best police department this side of Mississippi and the other side of Mississippi. So you guys are amazing. And I've, I've enjoyed being around. I know some of you, and I've been enjoying being around you guys for many of years. And so I appreciate and value each and every one of you and what you do. You deserve a lot more than what we're able to provide. And we, we hope over the next few years, we'll be able to continue to support you guys in a lot greater, in a lot greater way, for sure.
You know, a lot of times I find myself trying to describe Cookville. And it's, it's kind of town where people care about each other, support each other, and are there for each other. And both you as our citizens and our officers, you put a lot of truth to that and, and have done that in a really awesome way. So just thank you very much for being there.
Yeah, we're the lucky ones. Thank you. Just to echo and repeat everything that's been said here and how lucky we are to live in a town like Coco. But you're, you're, you're the, you're the integral part of what makes it what it is. And we can't thank you enough.
Yeah, I'm going to echo everything that they said. Y'all are blessings to our community. There's absolutely no way that this community could be what it is today without you guys keeping us safe. And also citizens who are willing to step up for their neighbor and make sure that they recover from events and assist where needed. So we appreciate y'all.
Thank you all so much. Feel free to hang out for the rest of the meeting, or, or you can get out and I won't. Yeah, we're not keeping attendance. It's okay. I won't take it personal.
Yeah, we're moving on to stormwater management.
I think signing stuff.
All right, as everyone clears out here, we'll continue on with, with the boring part of the meeting here. We've got our old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June twenty 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 four. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on that? Discussion from council? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O twenty four zero six one eight, amending Title fourteen, chapters five, seven, and eight of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to erosion control, stormwater management, and repair and buffer zone. Ms. Mayor Beth Elrod.
Thank you, Council Mayor. The proposed changes to the outlined ordinance are a result of TDEC twenty twenty two permit. We had two years to implement this. We've done our due diligence and prepared these ordinances for chapter five and chapter seven and chapter eight. We put this out for first reading. We had no calls or comments on it and no changes since the first reading. So I do recommend your approval and would accept any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move deeper.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? That is not here anymore. Wow, man. Nobody's saying, wow, I'm taking it personal. Okay.
No one's in stormwater.
No, they didn't care. Yeah. So yes, no discussion from council. We'll go ahead and take a vote then.
All votes.
Are not in because Chad's not paying attention.
We know why.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, consider on second and final, consider on second and final reading ordinance O twenty four zero six one nine, replacing Title thirteen, chapter one, section thirteen, one oh seven, tree ordinance of the Cookville Municipal Code. Ms. Elrod.
This is just amendments to the tree, the tree ordinance recommended by the tree board to update some wordings and practices. This is the second reading. We had no calls or comments on this and no changes since the first reading. So I do recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Bachi, second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Consent agenda, six A, consider awarding bid and approve purchase of vehicle emergency response equipment. And six B, set a date for a public hearing on eight one twenty four for ordinance O twenty four zero eight twenty, amending the Cookville Municipal Code Title eight, alcoholic beverages, by inserting a new chapter five to be entitled consumption of alcoholic beverages on public properties and public streets. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert.
And to have the hearing August first.
Yeah, do we, I added the date in, so we don't need to make a motion. Yeah, yes. All right. So I got a motion, Councilman Gilbert, for a second. Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven A, consider resolution R twenty four zero seven sixteen to increase the fee in lieu of sidewalk construction. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Section two oh nine of the Cookville zoning code established requirements for sidewalk installation for developments within the city. Section two oh nine point four sets forth circumstances where an optional fee in lieu of construction can be paid for developments that require sidewalk construction. On February twenty first, two thousand and two, the city council through resolution R oh two oh two oh two established the amount of the fee to be paid in lieu of sidewalk construction. The sidewalk fees were increased by resolution R nineteen oh nine seventeen in September two thousand and nineteen. Our current fees for sidewalks are twenty-two dollars per linear foot for four-foot sidewalks, twenty-six dollars per linear foot for five-foot sidewalks, and thirty-two dollars per linear foot for six-foot sidewalks. The established fee has been in place for five years without an increase due to increased cost for sidewalk construction. The planning division, after consultation with the Public Works Department, has proposed an increase to the current established fees. These increases are thirty-six dollars for four-foot sidewalks, forty-five dollars per linear foot for five-foot sidewalks, and fifty-four dollars per linear foot for six-foot sidewalks. These proposed changes have been recommended by the Planning Commission, as recommended by the Planning Division. I request your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion made by Councilman Bachi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider authorizing the city manager to exercise purchase option agreements and proceed with the purchase of properties at eighteen oh six North Washington Avenue, map forty F, Group H, parcel thirty one point oh two, and eighteen sixteen North Washington Avenue, map forty F, Group H, parcel thirty one. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you know, we spent many, many months trying to find a location for the relocation of Fire Station Two. We have identified, we believe, a perfect location to move Station Two for new construction. Of course, this station, like Station Three, is fifty years in age and is in dire need of replacement. And we tried to keep it in as close proximity as possible to our existing station because each station serves a designated area that helps maintain our fire insurance rating. As you said, Mayor, these properties are at eighteen oh six and eighteen sixteen. The eighteen oh six property is owned by Larry and Dana Wilmouth. And then the eighteen sixteen property is owned by the Pearl Wilmouth Testamentary Trust. Both properties combined consist of one point two two acres. We approved an agreement back in June for the purchase of this. They called for a price of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the two tracks combined. It also included an option payment of five thousand for each track. During the past month and a half, we've done our due diligence. We've had soils worked on this. It shows that this does have suitable soils and soils and should support the construction of the fire station and, of course, the, the fire trucks that go with it. We've also had the engineers look to see if the station design would fit on this site. As I noted, Monday, it will be tight, but we believe it will fit on the property. So I would request your approval to execute the option to purchase the approximate one point two two acres of property located eighteen oh six and eighteen sixteen North Washington Avenue and authorize to, to exercise the option and proceed with the purchase of the properties at a total price of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion made by Councilman Bachi, seconded by Councilman Walker. Yep. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council?
Excited about the new fire station. We need them.
Anybody else?
I'm excited we found a good location on Washington Avenue.
All right, go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider approval to purchase one CAT three oh five Mini X Track Co. with CAT H sixty five S hydraulic hammer and equipment trailer utilizing the statewide bid contract number two twenty five, contract ID seven two eight seven eight. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this is a mini excavator. Thompson Machinery Company was the vendor that we used through the statewide contract. The price is a hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty nine thousand and fifty two cents. It is a budgeted item, and it is under the budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Switching to orange or yellow. Let's see. The last, the last one was a cat as well. Okay. Yeah. We have some oranges. Yeah, we have, we have some of those.
All right, good to know. Any other comments? All right, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider awarding bid for advanced metering infrastructure components and water meters. Mr. Turner.
This item, the first ten of these are what the numbers that were approved in that June fifteen of twenty twenty three contract for AMI meters parts. And the last two items on here are sole source items. We're asking for the unit prices to be approved. We've got estimated quantities there. And this is needed for the next step of our AMI system.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
I'm, I'm really excited about the AMI projects that the city's got going on for our metering systems. I think that's kind of, it's a huge improvement in our infrastructure.
Anybody else? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven E, consider approval to pay record management software RMS fee. Major Winfrey.
Mayor and council, as you may know, we share a record management system with every public safety agency in the county. Button K nine one one purchased the system and holds a license at this time. Per the agreement, at the time of the purchase, we agreed to pay twenty-five percent of the annual maintenance fee, and that fee for this year is thirty-five thousand seventy-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Let's see. There we go. The payment would go to the Button K nine one one. It is a budgeted item, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Bachi, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider approval to pay the annual lease to Flock Safety for five license plate readers. Major Winfrey.
As you may know, we currently have Flock LPR cameras in use throughout the city in two separate contracts, on two separate contracts. This is for the continued lease of the first five cameras. The lease agreement covers a one-year period, and Flock Safety is the sole source provider. The lease is three thousand dollars per camera, and the total cost is fifteen thousand dollars, which also includes maintenance of the cameras. It is a budgeted item, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
When, when we're using these, how quickly does it come back to us? Immediately? Like, do y'all dispatch?
Yes, it's, it's, it's within just a few seconds. Yeah, so it's immediate.
So this is, this is huge for Amber Alert, Silver Alerts.
Absolutely. So it first started out for Amber Alerts and, 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 you know, traffic children. And it has grown. And, you know, we've, we've been able to recover stolen vehicles. Just the last few weeks, we caught a, an escaped convict prisoner out of Ray County, and who came down and got off on Jefferson. So, and we've used it for multiple things, the cop people.
Yeah, fun fact, we had a TBI agent, Emily Kiefer, daughter of Belinda, who used to work for the city.
Yep.
Came spoke to our Rudder group. She's in charge of the missing persons.
Yeah, she was an analyst for Lock On, and she became an agent. Yes.
And, and local law enforcement is responsible for most of the missing persons, missing persons solving things. So this is huge for our community to have that. Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you. All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider approval to purchase seven police pursuit vehicles and three CID vehicles. Major Winfrey.
Mayor and council, we request the purchase of seven Ford Interceptor SUVs, which are on statewide contract. The cost is forty-four thousand six oh one per vehicle for a total cost of three hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and seven dollars. And we're also requesting the purchase of three Chevrolet SUVs, which are also on statewide contract. You see, the unit cost is twenty-five thousand eight ninety-two eighty for a total cost of seventy-seven thousand six seventy-eight forty. These are budgeted items, and I would request your approval. And the SUVs, the three SUVs, Chevy SUVs are coming out of the drug fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Bachi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Axon for in-car body worn camera system and authorizing one year, authorizing year one payment, excuse me. Major Winfrey.
Yeah, Mayor and council, the police department has used fleet cameras, in-car cameras, and body cameras for well over ten years. We've used and been under contract with Axon for over four years and are asking the city manager to renew the five-year contract with Axon just a little bit early in order to go ahead and get ahead of any supply chain issues that may arise. Axon Fleet and Body Cameras Axon Fleet and Body Cameras are now on statewide contract 3040. The total cost for the five-year contract is $1,226,248.68. The one-year payment is $245,249.73. It is a budgeted item, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Now, we kind of had a conversation about the price tag of this, but there, there is no going the cheap route with these. This is something that the police department has to have, and we're very, we're glad that we do have the state-of-the-art technology and the ability to do that.
It, it is something that in today's law enforcement world, you have to have.
It was also to take advantage of purchasing early before a price increase, other than just supply chain. We're going to have an increase in the cost of equipment effective January 1, and it's another reason to enter into this contract early.
Yes.
Good job. Anybody else? Take a vote.
All votes correct. 5B's motion carries.
Thank you. 7I, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an architectural agreement with AEI for construction of an expansion of the Energy Department facility located on West Davis Road. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, earlier this year, the council approved combining the Electric and Gas Departments into a new department, the Energy Department, with the goal of reducing expenses and providing a more efficient service. A key component of this goal is housing the two divisions at the same location. I'm requesting your authorization to execute a contract with AEI for the architectural and engineering services for the construction of a new headquarters for the Energy Department. The existing facility at the Electric Division located on West Davis Road would be expanded to house both the Electric Division and the Gas Division. The project involves the construction of 13,400 square feet of new office space, the renovation of 5,200 square feet of existing office space, new warehouse spaces for both the Gas and Electric Divisions, re-roofing the existing electric building, which is about 35,000 square feet. The total budgeted amount for this project is just under $17 million. The proposed fee for architectural engineering services is $500,000, which is about 3.33%, which I believe is a very good rate on a project of this size. The tentative schedule for the project is for the construction documents to be completed within 90 days for project bidding to occur in November and with potentially construction starting in December. It's anticipated that the new facility would be completed by late 2026 or early 2027. The contract's been reviewed by the Energy Department Director Carl Haney, and hello, Carl in Mexico. That's why I'm presenting this tonight. And he's on vacation, a well-deserved vacation. And also Dan, our city attorney, Dan Rader, has reviewed it, and of course, I have. And I would request your authorization to enter into this agreement with AEI for the architectural engineering services for a fee of $500,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. 5B's motion carries.
Thank you. 7J, consider Resolution R-240717, authorizing the supplemental of a multimodal access grant application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the purpose of installing sidewalks along State Route 24, East Spring Street, committing the city to the local funding match and acknowledging responsibility for future maintenance. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The city applied for a multimodal access grant through the Tennessee Department of Transportation in 2014 to install sidewalks along East Spring Street from the East Triangle intersection of East Spring Street and East Broad Street, west to Old Kentucky Road. The project included two sidewalk segment connections along Carlin Drive and Raider Drive to the Cookville Community Center and Avery Trace Middle Street. The city was awarded this grant in 2015. Due to significant cost increases since grant approval, the city requested and TDOT approved a revised scope to the 2014 grant to construct sidewalks to break the project into phases. Phase one has completed sidewalk construction from Old Kentucky Road to Raider Drive. Council approved allocating additional funding to complete this segment, which was completed June of last year. The city applied for and was awarded another multimodal access grant in 2021 for a second phase to continue the project. Phase two would construct sidewalks from the terminus on East Spring Street and Raider Drive to the western access point of the Old Armory, including a segment along Carlin Drive. We anticipate phase two of the project will be ready for bid this fall. The 2021 grant was for $1 million with a 5% match. This resolution would authorize a 2024 multimodal access grant for a third phase of the project. Now, this phase would extend sidewalks from the phase two terminus to a proposed segment being constructed as part of the Saxony Townhome Project. The maximum grant award has increased to $1,250,000. However, matching funds for the city of Cookville have increased to 10% as determined by the economic status designation of Putnam County. Then you see from the map, the section in red is what has been completed. The orange section is what is anticipated to be bid this fall. The turquoise, greenish section would be what we are including in this 2024 application. And then the Saxony section is being completed with that development, and that is shown in pink. So we would hopefully anticipate one last phase of this project to complete the 2014 original grant award. This is, you know, a look, looking east. You can see there's some pretty significant topography issues on this segment. It will require retaining wall to be constructed. It's a pretty expensive segment to complete, and this is the section looking from Morningside West that would connect to Saxony. So I recommend approval of the resolution. Happy to answer any questions council has about the project.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Bachi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Take a vote.
All votes correct. 5B's motion carries.
Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda portion of this meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council on non-agenda items? Seeing none, anything the council's got? All right, meeting is adjourned.